Good evening, welcome to a regular board meeting of the Board of Education of the Toms River Regional Schools. This meeting was announced to the public through a notice published in the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger, October third, twenty twenty-two, which constituted as at least forty-eight hours' notice as required by law under the Open Public Meetings Act. Let me get a roll call please.
Contessa.
Here.
Egan.
Here.
Kidney.
Here.
Lam. Gardini.
Here.
Pelazo.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Buzanko. How?
Motion to go into executive session?
Motion Contessa?
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolved, the Board of Education at this time moved closed session to be held in High School North in the Executive Session Meeting Room, twelve forty-five Old Freehold Road, Toms River, New Jersey, for the purpose of and to include personnel rice number one five one eight four and number one six eight eight six, legal litigation update, cafeteria workers union sidebar, cafeteria playground aids, harassment, intimidation and bullying report, fire and security drill report, suspension report, other subject to change as outlined under the Open Public Meetings Act.[198.63][198.66](Audio ends)
Good evening. Welcome to a regular board meeting of the Board of Education of the Toms River Regional Schools. This meeting was announced to the public through a notice published in the Esberry Park Press and the Star Ledger, October 3rd, 2022, which constituted at least forty-eight hours' notice as required by law under the Open Public Meetings Act. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Can I have a motion to go back to regular session?
Second kidney?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, okay, now we'll do the pledge, sorry. Mr. Seda?
Good evening. Welcome, October certainly brought us a month for a lot, for a lot of great reasons to celebrate this rea-- uh, I'm sorry, let me start that over. Yeah. October brought us a lot to celebrate this month, and nothing more jumps out as much as what took place on last October 12th, on last week, on October 12th. The State Board of Education gave accolades to our teacher Christine Gertain and nominated her, made her the New Jersey State Teacher of the Year, which is fantastic. We, uh, we, we had a pep rally for her on, on Monday, and, and certainly we got a chance to celebrate an extraordinary lady with extraordinary talents that is going to be representative of all the teachers in New Jersey. But to think, and you put it in perspective, uh, the representative from the NJEA, she's one of a hundred and twenty-something thousand teachers, um, chosen to, to, to take this honor. And not only it speaks volumes for, for her, but it, it speaks volumes for, for her students, uh, for this district and for this community. If, if you had a chance to, to be a part of that celebration on Monday, or got to watch it in, on the YouTube channel, um, on Channel 21, which I think you still can. We, we had the, the RWJ Barnabas Arena filled with about a thousand students and two hundred special guests and educators, uh, from, from across her family and her, her career. And to be able to sit there and watch our two rival schools, uh, High School North and, and High School South, which represented, um, just where she teaches in those two schools, and watch the two bands going back and forth, and, and watching the students cheer, all with a sense of community. It really puts things into perspective and reminds us, again, what we have to celebrate here in Toms River Regional Schools with our tradition, and how rich and, and talented our students and our staff truly are. It makes you extremely proud, um, gets you emotional to see exactly what kind of future leaders we are developing in Toms River Regional Schools, and the example that they get, which we're so happy from teachers like Ms. Gertain and all of our entire staff. So we're extremely proud of, of Mrs. Gertain and her accomplishments, and we're even more proud of, of what that trickle-down effect has to our students in the classrooms, how they, um, celebrate each other's successes and come together and, and, and dance to each other's school songs, and, and understand what the spirit of Toms River Regional Schools is truly about. So that gets me excited to not only celebrate this month and all the accomplishments, but certainly next month and, and all the future for the rest of this year. Toms River Regional Schools has a lot to be proud of, so thank you and congratulations. At this time, we're gonna have our student representatives come to the microphone, so from Toms River High School East, Kara Jakobis.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would once again like to take this opportunity to thank you all for allowing me to speak tonight. There have been, there's been so much going on at the home of the Raiders, and I'm happy to share the highlights. On September 28th, East celebrated Good Neighbor Day, where our student council gave out seventy-five mums to the houses that surround the school. We also held a fundraiser for suicide prevention and celebrated the Week of Respect. The students and faculty at East take pride in our stance against bullying. We supported this initiative with a Spirit Week, which focused on positive messages of teamwork, peace, and acceptance. We also had a Spirit Week to kick off our homecoming. My favorite day was on Friday, which was our class colors, because we also had our pep rally that day. Our Raider Nation leaders Bobby Sabatino and Leo Batista hosted our first pep rally of the, of the school year. The spirit is still alive at East, and that has been evident at our pep rally and athletic events. Our college visits are in full swing, with eleven colleges visiting High School East so far. On October 7th, we welcomed Donna Velardi, a forensic nurse, and on Thursday, we'll be joined by Brad Bilheimer and Anthony Carrington to discuss their career in prosecution and law. We also hosted the College Fair at East, where over a hundred and forty colleges, trade schools, and armed forces attended. Last week was my favorite week of the school year, Homecoming Week. This week included fun spirit days and the football game, where we actually scored against North, and a spectacular homecoming dance. Around seven hundred and fifty students attended the disco-themed dance and enjoyed a great night of fun and dancing. Congratulations to our King and Queen, Leo Batista and Sophia Merlino. We also had our senior class photo and signed graduation gown that symbolizes our commitment to graduate. My senior class will vote in May to decide which faculty member embodies the spirit of the Raider, and will get to wear the gown at graduation. A few more Raider highlights. Congratulations to our gymnastics team, who is currently undefeated, to Raider volleyball player Claudia Cosme, who had her five-hundredth dig, to our October Seniors of the Month, Ellie Clayton and Brayden Deal, to Nicholas DiNardo for being recognized by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation, and to Addison Husenica and Peyton Gallagher for placing first and second in the high school category for the Veterans Day essay contest. Also, a big Raider welcome to our newest assistant principal, Mr. DiMarco. This week, we'll be learning about Violence Awareness Week, which focuses on teaching our students good values in order to prevent bullying and violence and promote the "Not in Our House" school-wide motto. We are also up for, we are also gearing up for Halloween festivities at East, which includes our Safe Trick or Treat on October 28th. Local families can trick-or-treat in our decorated hallways and stay for food trucks and fire pits after. We are looking forward to another great month at the home of the Raiders. Thank you for your attention and support tonight.
Thank you, Kara. From Toms River High School North, we have Drew Pariq.
Good evening, everyone, to my fellow Mariners over there, and to everyone tuning in from home. Autumn is here at the home of the Mariners. Recently, Nick Talkman from The Greatest Catch gave an inspirational talk at our school, teaching, teaching us to make good decisions and go after our goals. This talk is part of our monthly Anchored in Success program, in which all students take time to think about decision-making, respect, mental health, and social and academic focus. This program has been successful, and we Mariners have learned a lot from it. Next week, sophomore and junior Mariners will be taking their PSATs. We wish them the best of luck on the exam. In the past month, many of our Mariners attended the free college fair at High School East, receiving information from over one hundred colleges and universities. For its second year, we are running Mariner Mentors, an initiative undertaken by our student council, pairing upperclassmen with struggling underclassmen to foster a sense of community within our students. Regular meetings, both after school and during lunch, will build relationships, and our student council officers will be teaching the mentees successful habits utilizing the Seven Habits of Highly Effective Teens. Recently, we had our homecoming, the theme was Starry Night. It was a beautiful night, and everyone in attendance seemed to enjoy themselves and relish the opportunity to be together on our campus. Congratulations to seniors Michaela Burns and Damon Brown, who were crowned Queen and King. Additionally, all of our athletic teams are moving towards the middle of their regular seasons and honoring their seniors for their years of dedication. All are very grateful to have that opportunity to get outside and play. Congratulations to our several sports teams, including football, field hockey, girls cross-country, women's girl soccer, gymnastics, and girls tennis. Congratulations to senior Olivia Fratichelli, who yesterday netted her two-hundredth career goal, a remarkable feat. In fact, Liv just, Liv became just the fourth field hockey player in state history to notch two hundred goals in a high school career. Way to go, Liv. Our band, The Marching Mariners, recently placed first in the competition. Congrats to them. End step-held tryouts, welcoming several new members to their team. On Sunday, October 16th, student council participated in the Making Strides Against Breast Cancer Walk in Point Pleasant. We were joined by the Medical Club and Key Club as well. Later that day, several spooky Mariners took part at the Field of Dreams, helping with the annual Safe Trick or Treat. Bring on the sweet treats. Several bake sales were held by the Baking Club, Class of 2023, as well as other clubs. They're a great fundraiser, and our Mariners appreciate their yummy snacks. Congratulations to junior Riley Bedennis for placing third in the Toms River Veterans Day essay contest. Riley will be honored at the Toms River Township Council Meeting on October 26th, and will have the opportunity to march in the Veterans Day Parade on November 11th. On Monday, October 17th, we were able to celebrate our very own Mrs. Gertain for winning New Jersey State Teacher of the Year. She's the only, only teacher that can make North and South overcome the rivalry for research. We were joined by High School South for a pep rally, in which Mrs. Gertain was awarded with a brand-new car, as well as several accolades presented by members of our Board of Education, Bureau Office, and New Jersey Department of Education, and the Navy. These awards were followed by speeches from fellow authentic science research Mariners and Indians. As an ASR student myself, I contest to the fact that Mrs. Gertain is an awesome teacher. As someone absolutely love, in love with science and all things nerdy, Mrs. Gertain is my greatest supporter. She's always the first person I tell about all of my accomplishments, "Sorry, Mom," and I'm surprised she still responds when I send her the latest articles about my research late at night. For us ASR students, meeting with Mrs. Gertain bi-weekly just isn't enough, and we are still so grateful that she's able to make individual time for all of us, as her Google Calendar doesn't leave her much wiggle room. Mrs. Gertain deeply cares for each and every one of her students, and it would take us all more than a lifetime to repay her for how special she has made us feel. Mrs. Gertain, it's been a privilege to have you as my teacher, and no other teacher deserves this honor more than you. On behalf of all ASR students, past-- On behalf of all ASR students, past, present, and future, we love you, Mama G. Congratulations to our October Students of the Month, Sophie Regney and myself, Drew Perique. Sophie serves as the Vice President of the Nautical Stars Theater Company and the Treasurer of the Class of 2023. She has been inducted into National Honor Society, she's involved in team, International Thespian Society, and plays on our varsity soccer team. She has been voted Best All-Around by her classmates, and plays violin in the main university youth orchestra. After graduation, Sophie would like to dual major in Kinesiology and Nutrition, and hopes to be a part of, hopes to be a physical therapist working with special-needs children. I serve as our Student Council President and as the Secretary of Class of 2023. I've been inducted into the National Honor Society, and I'm active in team as well as Authentic Science Research. I've been honored as a Congressional Gold Medal Award winner, New Jersey State Civil by Literacy in Spanish, and an AP Scholar with Honor. I hope to major in Biology on the pre-med track at either Brown, Rutgers, or Penn State University. Enjoy the cooler weather, and I wish you all a happy Halloween. Stay spooky.
From Toms River High School South, recently Class A South Tennis Champion Riley Hussey. As recent as today.
A lot has happened at South since the last time I've spoken to you all, so let's get right into it. The following clubs and associations at South held their first organizational meetings towards the end of September. French Club, Film Club, Club, ASFA, which is the Association of Students for Africa, Robotics Club, Fishing Club, Interact Club, Spanish Club, Bible Club, Indian Givers Club, the Association of Student Helpers, and Book Club. The Gay Street Alliance will hold its first meeting tomorrow, October 20th. The Alliance for Sustainability has already met a few times this year, where students have helped to recycle around the school and will soon be planting a tower garden. The first math league competition was held on Tuesday at Toms River East, and Ms. Sheel is always taking sign-ups in Room E1. Also, the Board Game Club continues to be successful, as new members keep on rolling in at every meeting. Mr. Sol, the advisor of our school newspaper, The Cedarberry, is looking for any interested writers. The Chess Club is also looking for new players to be a part of the championship program. And our Dart Youth Prevention Coalition is looking for new students interested in living a healthy lifestyle, free of drugs and alcohol. Our South mascots held a very successful Chipotle fundraiser, and our Spirit Club held a successful Mr. Softy's fundraiser as well. The night prior to the Great American Rivalry Football Game against Toms River North, the South Spirit Club held a mini pep rally, where our South mascots led the group in some of South's favorite cheers. The South Spirit Club also sold the official South Spirit shirt at Back to School Night, which was held on September 29th. Shout out to Kim Austin for the Indianific t-shirt design. The South Choir held a Sundays Ice Cream fundraiser, and our Fishing Club did a top-notch job in their first tournament. Key Club will be sponsoring a Safe Trick-or-Treat event in our school, and on Friday, October 21st, the German Exchange students are coming to South. Mr. DiMarco, the advisor of the South German Club, has many different Indianific activities planned for the German students to experience over the course of the 10 days they're here. Our four different classes have also been very proactive in the beginning of the school year. The Class of 2023 sold the official Class of 2023 pink tie-dye shirt and crumb cake. The Class of 2024 held a Chick-fil-A fundraiser. The Class of 2025 held a successful Buffalo Wild Wings fundraiser and Chipotle fundraiser. And the Class of 2026 is running a school-wide dodgeball tournament. The classes of 2023 and 2024 are both getting ready for the annual Powder Puff Football Game, which will be held on November 16th at Detweiler Stadium. Every Friday at South, the Spirit Friday, where students and staff wear maroon and white. However, this week specifically is Senior Week, where the senior class follows the following themes throughout the week. Monday, Senior Citizen Day. Tuesday, Anything But a Backpack Day. Wednesday, Wacky Wednesday. Thursday, Pop Culture Day, and sticking to tradition, Friday is Spirit Day. South's Homecoming Dance is scheduled for Saturday, October 22nd, as both juniors and seniors are looking forward to this grand event. Our senior class picture was taken on Friday, October 7th, where senior superlativ winners were also announced. South held its Week of Respect from October 3rd through October 7th, and Aretha Franklin's song "Respect" was heard all week over the sound waves at the home of the Indian. I would also like to extend a few congratulations, starting off with Ms. Gertain, who was named New Jersey Teacher of the Year. Ms. Gertain is a science teacher and ASR leader in the district. After attending the pep rally to honor her this week at High School North, it is evident how Ms. Gertain embodies all of the best qualities of a teacher. So thank you for all you do. This award was well-earned. Also, congratulations to October Seniors of the Month, Riley Hussey and Ryan Svensson. In terms of sports, the Great American Rivalry Football Game took place on Friday, September 30th, at Toms River South. This game featured the Toms River North Mariners versus the Toms River South Indians. Prior to the game, the South mascots, band, and cheerleaders held a courtyard pep rally to get the football team fired up. During the football game, the Mariner Silent Drill, the Marine Silent Drill, took place at halftime, and it was very impressive. Although the Indians lost the football game to the Mariners, we did beat the Mariners in the Chin-Up Competition. Across the high schools, South students did 2,066 chin-ups collectively. Our Fall Sports Pep Rally took place on Friday, September 23rd, and it was a very spirited event, where the mascots' entrance dance was the highlight of the afternoon. Moving along, congratulations to the field hockey team for their 1-0 victory over Bricktown. The field hockey team continued their winning ways by defeating East, Jackson Memorial, Brick Memorial, Freehold Borough, Howell, and Red Bank Regional. Our Lady Indian Net Women have also been successful these past two months. In late September, the team placed second in the county at the Ocean County Tournament, and a special congratulations to Angelina Devivi for being crowned the second singles Ocean County Tournament champion. Their winning streak continued with victories over Southern, Bricktown, Central Regional, Jackson Memorial, Brick Memorial, and Burlington in the First Round of States. And we also just won the Class A South title, so that's cool, too. The Lady Indian Net Women also held their Senior Day in October, where it was a great day on and off the courts. The team beat East and celebrated their eight seniors and their accomplishments on the hard course of Toms River South. Another congratulations this time to our varsity volleyball team on their 2-1 victory over Jackson Memorial. Their winning ways continued with wins over Howell, Brick Memorial, Toms River East, Manchester, Central Regional, and Brick Township. Along with this, our Girls Varsity Soccer Team also defeated Jackson Memorial in a close 1-0 game. They also have wins over Brick Memorial and Ocean Township, and was named the Surf Taco Team of the Week. Another congratulations to our Boys Soccer Team for yet another close 1-0 victory over Jackson Memorial. They also remain victorious over the teams of Brick Memorial, Manalapan, Barnegat, and Neptune in the first round of the short conference tournament. Our Girls Golf Team sold Candygrams at Back to School Night, which overall was a very successful night, where teams and clubs got a chance to sell South merchandise, and parents got to see the school and our amazing teachers here. As fall sports slowly come to an end, the following winter sports have held or will be holding their interest meetings very soon. Boys and Girls Bowling, Girls Swim, Boys Swim, Girls Basketball, Boys Basketball, and Wrestling. And I cannot forget to mention that the South Ski Club, which was voted the number-one club at South by its advisor, Mr. Malik, is holding its first meeting on Friday, October 21st. I cannot wait until next month, when I get to report all the great things that will happen at the home of the Indian. Thank you, and go River.
Thank you, Riley. At this time, I'd like to welcome Intermediate East Principal Brian Madigan and Intermediate East teacher, Mr. Karnikowski, to the podium.
Alrighty, folks. Tonight, the Board of Education would like to take a moment to recognize an incredible group of young, talented sixth graders, from Intermediate East to and above and beyond for our school and for our community, as they enter their first year at the home of the Rockets. Jersey Shore Girl Scout Troop 52, some of whom are here tonight with us in the audience, donated their time this summer to create a magnificent mural in our lower A-Wing hallway in support of our school's mantra, "Being Rocket Ready." Now, for you folks who probably don't know what Rocket Ready means, Rocket Ready means being responsible, respectful, and accepting of everyone in our school community. And let me tell you, as a teacher who teaches in A-Wing, that mural is a star attraction. Adorned with school spirit, their hand-painted design says to passersby, "Don't tell me the sky's the limit when there are no footprints on the moon." Coupled with a beautifully crafted red and white East rocket ship and astronaut, this creation by Troop 52 has served as an inspiration to both students and staff alike at Intermediate East. It challenges all members of the East Rocket community to literally reach for the stars in all of their endeavors. Here tonight with us, Kinsley Connolly, Trina Golay, and Maya Munoz, if you could come
Congratulations again. At this time, that concludes our student presentations and awards, and that our student representatives want to call it an evening.
Okay, next up, we have our committee reports. They all can be found on the Toms River Schools website. Does anyone who heads a committee want to say anything tonight? Budget and Finance is Mr. Mazenko. He's not here tonight. Joe, anything for voting some grounds?
Nothing, Ms. Howe. Everything is really on our website, and there's nothing heavy to cover.
Okay.
Mrs. Howe, if I may?
Sure.
For personnel, I just want to make a note that Toms River Schools is the wonderful school district it is because of our staff, and we are, once again, hiring for a variety of certified and non-certified positions. If you'd like to join our team, please take a look at the website. Thank you.
Mrs. Egan for curriculum?
Yeah, this meeting was extremely formative. We were told about the elementary report card updates and how they're going to match up with the new reading program. But one of the programs that they announced was an Adult English at Second Language Night, and it really is going to help a lot of our Toms River families with the language support that they need. And I was real excited to hear about that. And for the first time, I can say, we had a working meeting. In groups, we reviewed the ELL mathematics data. We gave some talking points, and we'll be looking for more of a discussion starting in November again. Looking forward to that.
Thank you. We don't discuss insurance in public, sorry about that, and policy. Miss Contessa, no? Okay. All right, thank you. So right now, we're going to take comments from guests and press, and that was just for the agenda items only. This is limited to three minutes, as per Board Policy Number 167. Okay. Sir, at the end, we'll take...
Sir, it's just for the agenda items, but at the end, there's another opportunity to comment on anything. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Need a motion for the approval of the submission of the M1 Health and Safety Evaluation of School Buildings Checklist for 2022-2023, Comprehensive Maintenance Plan, and Capital Reserve Calculator to the Department of Education.
Motion, Kidney.
Second, Egan.
Roll call?
Contessa.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Kidney.
Yes.
Nardini.
Yes.
Palazzo.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Howe.
Yes.
Mrs. DeMaio?
On January 5th, 2011, the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act was signed into law to strengthen the standards and procedures for preventing, reporting, investigating, and responding to incidences of HIV of students that occur on school grounds and off school grounds under specified circumstances. The State Commissioner of Education revised the NJDEE Model HIB policy, which was shared with individual school districts to aid them in the revision of their own policies in order to align them with the amended law. A program was designed by the Commissioner of Education to grade each public school and school district in their efforts to implement the new Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights. The Program of Self-Assessment was developed in consultation with experts in anti-bullying strategies and school climate improvement with representatives from various districts throughout the state. This self-assessment document was revised in 2013, in the 2013-14 school year, based on feedback that the New Jersey Department of Education received from the field during the first year of implementation, and has remained the same through the 2021-22 school year. As it is each year, the Commissioner's Program and Guidance for Determining Grades Under the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act was distributed to all of our school anti-bullying specialists. The first step of the grading program was for each school, through its school safety and school climate team, to complete a self-assessment of its implementation of the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights. This self-assessment tool is organized into eight core elements, which include various HIB programs, trainings, curriculum, HIB personnel, and HIB incident reporting and investigation procedures. All documentation of compliance is maintained at the school level. Each indicator is organized into categories of compliance, and each level is assigned a score equivalence. All scores are added together to come up with individual school grades, and all school grades are then added together and averaged to come up with a district grade. Tonight, I'm here to share the scores for our district and the number of incidents reported, investigated, and deemed acts of HIV. The self-assessment portion of the score for our district is 76 out of a possible 78 points. When broken down by level, High School scored a total, an average of 76 out of 78 points; Intermediate scored a total of 75 out of 78 points; and Elementary averaged 77 out of 78 points. During the 21-22 school year, 320 acts of HIB were reported and investigated. Of those, 126 were confirmed as HIV, according to statute. It's important to note that the number of acts of HIV and confirmed were significantly down from prior years due to the hybrid and remote setup for the first half of the year. This self-assessment serves as an opportunity to reflect upon our progress in implementing the law and to reinforce and strengthen our HIV prevention intervention programs, policies, and practices. Administrators from each of our 18 schools have shared HIV data with staff members, analyzed such data, and targeted specific areas to focus efforts to promote positive school culture and climate. Our school district plans to further assess strengths and vulnerabilities for learning by conducting our annual school climate survey and using this data to measure our program implementation. This report is reflective of the efforts of our school, of our staff, in all areas of school life. Our school safety and school climate teams, parents, students, nurses, student assistants, counselors, guidance counselors, secretaries, bus drivers, custodians, cafeteria workers, our school resource officers, safety officers, and other support staff. All members of our school community have received training and updated communication on the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights, as well as continue to implement and update programs and activities designed to promote a positive school climate. Each school has assigned one person to serve as an anti-bullying specialist and one administrator as a liaison to the district-wide committee. These people volunteer countless hours to trainings, investigations, program planning, and additional school safety team meetings. We recognize and acknowledge the hard work by these individuals and all members of our school community, who share in the goal of providing our young people with a safe and positive learning environment. Thank you to everyone.
Need a motion for the approval of the resolution for the 2021-2022 New Jersey Department of Education School Self-Assessment for Determining Grades Under the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act.
Motion, Palazzo.
Second, Egan.
Roll call?
Contessa.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Kidney.
Yes.
Nardini.
Yes.
Palazzo.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Howe.
Yes.
Need a motion for the approval of the first reading of the following policies, regulations, and bylaws as listed in the agenda.
Motion, Contessa.
Second, Kidney.
Roll call?
Contessa.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Kidney.
Yes.
Nardini.
Yes.
Palazzo.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Howe.
Yes.
Need a motion for the approval of Agenda Items Number 15 through 20 as listed in the agenda. Motion, Williams.
Second, Kidney.
Roll call?
Contessa.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Kidney.
Yes.
Nardini.
Yes.
Palazzo.
Yes.
Williams. Need a motion for the approval and certification of the Board Secretary's Report for August 2022.
Motion, Egan.
Second, Nardini.
Roll call?
Contessa.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Kidney.
Yes.
Nardini.
Yes.
Palazzo.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Howe.
Yes.
I need a motion for approval of Personnel Agenda Items Number 1 through 27 and Addendum Number 28 through 30?
Motion, Kidney?
Second, Contessa.
Roll call?
Contessa.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Kidney.
Yes.
Nardini.
Yes.
Palazzo.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Howe.
Yes.
I need a motion and approval for Educational Program Agenda Items Number 1 through 8.
Motion, Palazzo?
Second, Williams.
Roll call?
Contessa.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Kidney.
Yes.
Nardini.
Yes.
Palazzo.
Yes, with a note that I haven't seen so many trips on a educational programs agenda in years, and I am thrilled.
Williams.
Yes.
Howe.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask the board members, I'll start with you, Ms. Contessa, if anyone has any old business or new business? Mrs. Egan? Mr. Kidney? Mr. Nardini?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Okay. I want to bring it to the attention of the public that I'm sure everybody by now knows about the Field of Dreams over here adjacent to police headquarters. This Saturday evening between 8:00 and 10:00, they're going to have a comedy night. It's a fundraiser. They're going to have some heavies there. They're going to have some good comedians. And I would invite everyone to go and support this great cause. And one more thing, if I may, the Field of Dreams has ongoing commitment to maintain the fields and, and the whole facility. It takes money. So what they did is they came up with a plan. It's a QR code. I guess everybody knows what a QR code is. It's available on our website, I believe. Right? And you click on it, and you give it a credit card number, and once a month, it'll take $5, just $5, out of your credit card. Okay, out of your account. And it helps support that. So we have almost 100,000 people in this town. If we get a portion of them to do this, it would be very much appreciated. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nardini. Ms. Palazzo?
Thank you, Mrs. Howe. I just wanted to mention a few things. First off, I want to congratulate Mrs. Christine Gertain on her well-deserved award of the New Jersey Teacher of the Year. This is an incredible accomplishment. And I want to say thank you to all of the building and district-level administrators that have supported Mrs. Gertain and all our other teachers in acquiring the professional development that they need day in and day out in order to make sure that our students get what they need day in and day out. One of the things that Mrs. Gertain mentioned at the pep rally the other day was that she was thrilled to be able to make sure that she was on top of the latest teaching methods and scientific methods. And without the support of our district administrators at both the building and the district level, that would never have happened. So I wanted to say thank you to them because this wasn't something that she could have achieved without them. I also wanted to say thank you to those who came out to celebrate with us. Beechwood Councilman LaCross, South Toms River Mayor G.G. Esparsa, and Toms River Mayor Mo Hill. And with a special shout-out to retired Assistant Superintendent Mark Natnagarr. Thanks for coming to celebrate with us. Mrs. Williams and I attended the Toms River Community That Cares Key Leaders Meeting last week with South Toms River Councilman Oscar Cradle. And we talked about ways to engage our children and keep them safe and healthy. And one of the things that was mentioned was that the children had completed a survey recently and that they say that Toms River Regional Schools is very supportive of them, even more so than their parents. So I want to say bravo to the staff of Toms River Regional Schools because apparently our kids think that you love them. So that's phenomenal. It's a great thing. I wanted to say thank you to Teddy Gillan for putting together a wonderful event. The Toms River Athletic Hall of Fame induction was this weekend, and it was great to be able to participate in that. And so much time and effort went into it. And I know that Ted was a little nervous, but I thought things went off without a hitch, and it was really excellent. And I wanted to thank Principal Dennis Hoseapple from South Toms River Elementary for inviting me in to do morning announcements for Violence Awareness Week. That was really special. It was a cool thing to do. And last but not least, I wanted to mention that the Toms River Special Education Parents Group, or CPAG, held their first meeting this week at the Toms River Field of Dreams, which was a really cool thing. And I wanted to make sure that if you're not aware that we have a Special Education Parents Group, it, it's really a nice place for parents of children with IEPs and 504s to get the special kind of support and, and collaboration that they need. There is information about the CPAG on the district website, and each of the building principals sends out a reminder when the meetings are coming. I think they're held four times a year. So if you have a child with, who needs special services, that group is for you, and I encourage you to participate. Thank you.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes, thank you. There's an educational initiative that I've been wanting to bring to our attention for a long time now, but it just wasn't the right time. We had COVID. We didn't have a permanent superintendent. Well, COVID is waning, and we have our superintendent, so this is it. It's an, it's an initiative that was very popular several years ago. It's called Student Service Learning. It's, in fact, I'd say about maybe five or six years ago, it was in the headlines in our educational materials. Just like today, everything is social, emotional learning. But i- in reality, student service learning, which in plain English is doing service, students doing service, and social, emotional learning are very much connected. Because when you do service, when students do service, it does promote positive social, emotional behaviors. In our schools, we require service of students that are in the Honor Society. Think about it. Why not the rest of the students? Many of our local private high schools require that for graduation. What does it do? It builds self-esteem, and it decreases absenteeism. Just a bit, little bit of history because it's been on my mind for some time. In 1993, Maryland was the first state that mandated service learning for graduation for high school. They required 75 hours, and they lifted up to their 24 school districts to figure out how they wanted to do, do it. Some districts did a hybrid where some of the hours had to be done in middle school, and it was embedded into the curriculum. So 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, that's 30 hours, it was embedded into the curriculum. So that's something that needs time to work on. And then the rest of the hours, the high school students would do on their own. By 19, by 2001, 19 other states now have it as their requirement. I don't know if any districts in our, in New Jersey do, but why wait for a mandate for something that is really so easy to do? So I just want to put that out there for our, our board and our superintendent to, and our administration to think about it. And, and if we can do something like that, well, then let's take six months to a year to develop that program and then begin something that is going to maybe alleviate some of the anxiety some of our children have. They will find areas in their life that they never thought they would be interested in. And just to close this off, when my daughter was in high school, she was in so, National Honor Society, so she needed service. I was a candy striper. We don't hear that word anymore. So I said, Allison, let's go to the hospital and do service there. Her first day that she started, she was sent to the pharmacy. She loved it. She's a pharmaceutical engineer today. So that's another thing. It produces, if children find something that they wouldn't know that they would ever like, and it becomes a profession in their life. And I think that's one of our goals in high school, to open our children's minds to that. So I put that out there, and I hope maybe it's a discussion that we can have now that we're back to normal.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. We will discuss that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams, and I'm all about that community service. I think it's a fantastic idea. I just wanted real quick to tell a quick story. I was at the Intermediate East, Intermediate South track meet a few weeks ago. And number one, it was so nice to see the principals outside rooting the kids on at Intermediate East. So Mr. Cleveland, you were there. Mr. Reagan, you were there. Thank you. It was good to see you out there cheering the kids. I know the kids get excited when they see the, you know, the principal outside. But I wanted to say at the end of the race for the boys, there was a boy from Intermediate East who was running his race, and he was a little bit behind the other kids. And I'm going to say about 15 of his teammates from Intermediate East ran back to get, catch up with him, and they cheered him on the whole way. And it was like one of those things that as a mom and as a, as a board member, you see things like that. And those things go so unrecognized sometimes, but those kids on that intermediate cross-country team for the boys, you can go back to the school and tell them how proud that made me to, to represent the district and just to see that sportsmanship. It was, it was something like, those are the things that stick out when people ask me why we do this job, well, this volunteer work, why we do this. Those are the reasons, those little moments that you would miss otherwise. And I'm, I'm happy to be able to tell people about that. It was, it was really special. Another thing is, it was nice to see our team kids down at the Harvest Festival in Toms River over the weekend. It was a great event that the town put on, but it's great to see the team kids playing games and just in, interacting with the younger people that were there. They're always, it's always fun to see those red shirts. Those, those kids are great. And also, I wanted to say Lily Oliver, who is a senior at High School South, won the cross-country title for Ocean County the other day, and it's her third time. And it's the first time in history that, that for a girl who won three times in a row the cross-country title. So I thought that was cool. She was in a few running pages and stuff like that. So I thought that was great. And the strange thing is, is I'm doing some student teaching now down in a different district. And one of the students I have asked me, oh, do any of your kids do sports in high school? I said, oh, I have a daughter that runs cross-country, one does volleyball. And she said, oh, your daughter gets to run with Lily Oliver? And I said, yes, she does. And all she said was, you know, she is a fast runner. I'm not going to take that away from her. But she said, she is so nice to all of us, and she runs so fast, and she cheers us on, and she talks to all of us. And that's another thing that comes from, out of our district. Our students are doing such amazing things. And we only see headlines and maybe some negative stuff, but like our students are so amazing. And even students in other districts are talking about them and, and saying how wonderful they are. So I just love to hear those things and let everyone know that our students are amazing. They're coached by great people. They're taught by great people. They're led by great people. And I just want to reiterate that. I think sometimes we lose that in the day-to-day of, of this and, and in the town. And you forget that we have these little warriors and, and kids out there that are really representing our district in, in really great ways. So that's all I have for tonight. So right now, we will open up for comments from guests and press. So this is limited to five minutes as per board policy. And all we ask is that you state your name and write your name and address in the book on the podium. Take your time. Okay.
Thank you. My name is Melinda Percy, and I live in Orly Beach, New Jersey. I want to first of all compliment the board and the administration for all you do for, for children. I've been in education for over 50 years, county superintendent, assistant commissioner of education. I've been a superintendent in a number of districts. I've been on the board of a college. Tomorrow night, I'll be sitting behind the table as a consultant in a charter school. So I know, you know, what your thoughts are, what our anguishes are. But I wanted to just thank you upfront about that. The reason why I'm here, obviously, is this banner. And basically to mention that 26% of the community, Toms River, are represented by Italian-American. I think it was unconscionable that the board decided at the late hour to eliminate Columbus Day. I know there's a school of thought that says, better the children are in school because they would learn about these different things. Yet all of our outstanding students this evening, none of them mentioned Columbus Day. So I would say that it seemed as if there was not good prior planning in terms of the calendar. I've made many calendars, and looking over the present calendar, there were certainly, if, if, if in fact it had been studied, you would find, you would have found that there were two days in September that could have been taken at the beginning of the school year to make up your shortfall, as it were, two days in November. And there was another day in April that if the calendar had been rearranged, you could have picked up another day. So there were over five days in the calendar, and it didn't have to be Columbus Day. The Columbus Day, as you know, is a holiday that was instituted in 1892 by the federal government. And so basically, I don't want to take any more of your time, but basically to say that we're asking you to make a commitment that as you develop your 2023-24 calendar, that you include Columbus Day on that calendar. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And as, as well, you know, just, just to follow up on that, I mean, you're commissioner and have been on many school boards. And you, and you do know that lots of school districts and, and granted, 100% as we develop our calendars in the future, will keep our community and what is, isn't, is, is important to them when we do those things, okay? I promise you that will be done. But I, I just want to say again, we, we didn't cancel Columbus Day. We celebrated Columbus on Columbus Day in our schools. We, no different than Galloway Township, Manasquan, Stafford, Southern, the list is on and on. A lot of, lot of students go to school on Columbus Day. So the thought and the reason behind that day instead of the other days on the calendar was we were already in school on our staff that day. Going forward, we will have those discussions on the board, and we will certainly, we celebrate our Italian-American heritage. We respect it. We respect you, sir, and your service. So I thank you for your comments, and we certainly will keep that in mind as we plan in the future.
Good evening.
My name is Nicholas Staimo. Beside me is my daughter, Bella Staimo. I'm a little shaky. It is freezing in here.
I agree with you.
I come before you tonight with grave concern. I filed two investigations this year, June and in September. In June, it was concerning my 10-year-old daughter that stands beside me. And in September, it involved my eight-year-old child and my 10-year-old child. I was rather upset with how it was handled by the administration at the school, being told that my children weren't in fact victims of harassment, intimidation, and bullying because they didn't have one of the characteristics identified by race, ethnicity, gender. When they were, I was told that it was out of pure jealousy when students had recruited additional students to circle my children for the sole purpose to make them feel inferior, to intimidate them. It created a hostile environment at the school for my children. To this very day, they have escorts to go to the bathroom, to walk in hallway. I stand with them every morning at the school. In the afternoon, if I can't be present because I work for Child Protective Services, I'm a child, child advocate. So if I can't advocate for my own children, how, how am I advocating for other children? I stand with them after school. I am witness to actions that fellow students are. I am witness to actions that fellow students are subjecting my children to. I have been told, when I initially filed the investigation this year in September, the counselor had told me that she had priorities to attend to, such as lunch bunch and teaching, when my children's safety and well-being is my number-one priority. They continue my children to be fearful of walking the hallways, of going into the bathroom. My eight-year-old child, who these other children were ten years old, who decided to circle my children, and a teacher who is my child's uncle was present for the September incident at the school after school on school grounds, and he interfered and asked the students to stop using language, calling them terrorists, pedophiles, rapists, ten years old, circling them, making them feel that they could not leave. And you know what my children did? They did nothing. My daughter was awarded in June with the perseverance award because she took the higher road, the higher road, for being bullied, a term that I do not take lightly. This year, my eight-year-old got the Spirit Stick Award for courage because she has the courage to walk in that school every day, fearful. She won't even ride her bike to school anymore because she's going to come in contact with these kids at the bike rack. These kids that were also considered named to be on Safety Patrol, model students, that's what Safety Patrol is, model students, students that are setting a better example. My daughter is also on Safety Patrol. She now feels that she can't trust the administration at the school because she has stated what has happened to her, and they're still walking with their Safety Patrol badges on. My kids are still fearful of running into them. I'm not asking for the apologies, I'm not asking for them to be severely punished, but I'm asking for accountability, that they take accountability for their actions, that something further is done to make them understand that the words, the terms that they are using, they don't know what these words mean. To call a ten-year-old and an eight-year-old a terrorist, a rapist, a pedophile? And these are terms that are being used in this school, in the elementary school. I'm asking that there's some accountability. My child feels that what happened, that what happened to her meant nothing to the school, meant nothing. And I ask that something, that this be looked into further.
I'll be in touch with you in the morning.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion Nardini.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I need a motion to reopen.
Motion Palazzo.
Second, Nardini.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's okay.
I'm not Lily Oliver, I can't run that fast. I know this has, I don't know, never been done. I was asked to do this today. I said yes. Krista, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
I don't know if you'll be able to hear her, but Krista Whitaker wanted to come this evening and speak about something, but unfortunately, she had an emergency, and she asked if I would put her on speakerphone, if you would entertain that. I don't know, I guess I should ask permission first. Seta, I apologize.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, you know, I could speak with Mrs. Whitaker. It's not a precedent that we have set to, we don't have call-in, you know, for the Board of Ed meeting, but I'll be happy to get down and have a conversation with her.
However you want to, however you want to do it. It's your call.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly will do that. And or, you know, the next time we have, if she wants to do something in public, we can reiterate the conversation and follow up with it the next time in public. But I'll give her a call as soon as we close.
Okay, you're going to call her when you close?
Yep.
Krista, who's going to call you?
In ten minutes.
Seta's going to call you when you close. In ten minutes. Okay. Okay. Next meeting, perhaps?
Yes.
Oh. Yeah. Okay. All right.
Thank you, Mrs. Whitaker.
Thank you. Thanks.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So move, Nardini.
Second, Palazzo.
All in favor?
Aye.